Hi, Doctor.
Yeah, it's the atomic clock there. All right, it's seven o'clock and I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Darcy, you can call the roll, please.
Moore?
Here.
Mar?
Here.
Moody?
Here.
Instrom?
Here.
Engelhardt?
Here.
All right, thank you. Item three then on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item four on the agenda is perfection and approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for that, please? Second? All in favor, say aye. Item five is public comment time. Have we got anybody from the public that wants to say something? Do you? Come on up.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, yes, about a year ago this time, we were campaigning pretty hard. And so I wanted to share the good news, that it was very successful for us. And what that means specifically is, we were able to hire additional full-time teachers. So we went from sixteen mostly part-time teachers to twenty-two mostly full-time teachers. We opened a room that was previously closed. And this year, we had the biggest junior preschool class that we've had in several years. Years past, we've had around eight or ten, and this year, we had sixteen as of August. We're actually going to start a renovation project to help increase our infant capacity. We currently have fourteen infants on our waiting list. And we're hoping to complete the renovation by January, hire additional teachers, that we were able to meet the infant needs of our community. So we were able to provide care for around sixty-three children and forty-nine families because of the support that you guys provided us. So, thank you. Thank you, guys. And because of your support, we were able to hire and retain more teachers who are projected to have seventy children enrolled by November. So the wage enhancement program allowed us to increase wages from anywhere from a dollar to five dollars, getting us closer to that livable wage for our teachers. And it costed us about ten thousand dollars per month. Now, our families would have had to pay an additional hundred and seventy-five dollars per month per child without this. So it's very helpful for our families. And it helped us retain quality teachers and attract quality teachers. Teachers are now staying past the training and really engaged in the work. So we're making a difference, and you guys, you guys made that happen, and the community made that happen. Just want to share the good news.
Yeah, thank you, that's great. So, since we're screaming, Kristy, you want to give us your name, please?
Oh, yeah, Kristy Turner.
With the...
Postville Childcare.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else from the public? Somebody? All right, then we'll move on to item six. Maggie Berger, please, next.
Hi there, everyone. I'm Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. It is that time of the year where we're going to deliver your TIP and debt report here. I will remind you, the red heart of this report is our general obligation debt outstanding in the city. We've got that 2017A debt and the 2023A debt. Those bonds are listed, the first bond, the 2017, you issued one million, one hundred and five thousand up there in that header, it was issued in July. I remind you that the TIC is the true interest cost associated with that bond issue. And that bond is callable at this time. The 2023 will be callable after 2030, which is down there. We've drawn a line under the principal amount there. We give you the total principal, total principal and interest. You're not using any TIP revenue for any of these two debts, meaning they weren't for economic purposes. So, the far right column, where we've drawn the arrow, for fiscal year '26, you will be levying approximately one hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars in debt service levy when you do your fiscal year '26 budget, which is very similar to the amount that you levied last year for the '25. We go on to your revenue debt page, which is orange. This is where we have any water or sewer revenue debt outstanding. The first debt is the only water revenue debt that remains. That bond will be paid off here in 2025. We've got then the 2017 SRF debt for sewer, and then the 2019 SRF. This was a sponsored project for sewer as well. And then we do have the AgriStar project, or the USDA funding for AgriStar. Those debts are paid completely with the revenues of the system, whether it's water or sewer. And the biggest takeaway on this page is that there's nothing that can be levied in the debt service. So revenue debt cannot be levied for with a property tax. It has to be paid by the user fees that are paid for service for water and sewer. We go on and look then at our yellow page. This page is, is pretty simple at this point in time. We're not levying any TIP revenue monies from either the counties for any debt service. You do have an interfund loan that will be paid off here in 2025. And that was an interfund loan from the water fund to the TIP fund to do some projects. So that'll pay back in twenty, in 2025 at the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars. If you take on additional TIP debt, whether that is a debt obligation, a rebate obligation, it will show up on this form here attributable to the county that that is. Then we go on and look at our green pages. This is our general obligation debt capacity pages. Looking at column number two, we'll read straight down there. That is fiscal year '25. You have a property actual valuation here in the city of Postville of one hundred and fifteen million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand. If you look to column number one, that is significantly higher than the column number one, number of eighty-six million. It's actually about a thirty-four point three-seven percent increase. That is not normal. But if you all remember, about fifteen months ago, you got a card from the county that said, hey, you haven't done anything, but we're going to raise the valuation on your home or your commercial business, you know, your factory, whatever that is. That is what's leading to this. So there was that revaluation done as of 2023, and that's the fiscal year that we're currently in. This page, I remind you, does not include any rollbacks. So debt capacity is actual one hundred percent valuation. So we keep reading down column number two. That just means that your debt capacity total is five million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand. You've got geo-bonds outstanding of about nine hundred and ninety thousand of principal. You'll pay back a hundred and five thousand this year. And so that's remaining debt capacity of about four million, nine hundred and one thousand dollars. Again, pretty significantly higher than last year, again, just because of that revaluation that occurred. We tell most of our cities that they don't want to issue probably more than eighty percent of what they could issue, leaving that twenty percent as a contingency. So if we back that number up, you, you have about three point seven million dollars of debt capacity, which is actually about one point three million dollars more than you had prior to this. So it's pretty significant that even though the valuation, we all, you know, homes and businesses got valued higher, it does add to your city's debt capacity as, as available capacity. We did build in a, a pretty flat growth rate of one percent after that. City has been growing in the past, but just not at that level. Most of our cities are never growing at that level. So we're using anywhere between a half a percent and one percent growth. We know that the 2024 valuations were fairly flat, with the exception of people building new homes, building new businesses, if there was actual new properties that were built. And then we go on to the blue pages. This just calculates for you. The first two pages are Almackee. The second two pages are Clayton. You do not have any TIP valuation in Clayton County. So those last two pages are just there kind of as a placeholder until there's some new valuation or new growth going on in that. In Almackee County, column number two, that represents any TIP growth that you've had in the TIP district from commercial, industrial, personal property or ag, and residential. So we add all of those up, and you generate about five hundred and five thousand dollars of TIP. I'm sorry, you, you generate about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of TIP receipts, and you're using approximately twenty-nine thousand dollars of TIP receipts, again, this fiscal year. No TIP receipts being used next fiscal year and beyond. We just don't have any obligations at this point in time that are attributable to TIP. So, that's not a bad thing. That just means you've met all of the needs of your obligations. And as soon as there's something else for us to talk about and discuss, then we'll look to that. I just remind you that any new growth that occurs can generate new increment, right? So if there's new houses, if there's new businesses, you can do agreements that stand alone basically on that growth, because that's what you're looking at, you know, is, is that growth, it's paying new taxes. No one has seen those new taxes, right? And their budgets, and that's where you go ahead and collect those TIP receipts. Any questions about that? I'm going to stick around for your next presentation, in case there are questions.
In other words, we have a hundred and eight thousand that we could use.
You could, right. So we're not going to. You're not going to, but every dollar that you spend, remember, a third of that is coming from your budget as well, and can hurt your general fund. So we always try to tell you to kind of keep your askings about the same every year. But yes, if we had an agreement that we needed like an interfund loan, if we had an agreement for economic development purposes, we absolutely could go in and start that, let's say, earlier than maybe that valuation was there to cover that. So, absolutely. Well, like I said, I'm going to stick around for the next presentation, and if there's any questions in regards to TIP.
Thanks, Maggie. All right, we've gone to item seven then. Ben Garrett, come on up, please.
Good evening. I think I've spoken to everybody except for Police Chief, which is pretty good. In the upfront anyway, but my name is Ben Garrett. I grew up in Wakan, have lived in one of the last twenty years, and have a financial real estate background, and have been working for, I've been a lender, an asset manager, a developer, a brokerage company. And just recently, recently, the last year and a half, I'd say, started focusing on doing some, in some of the smaller communities, including Wakan. Gary and Val are becoming familiar faces. We just passed a, a great development agreement in Wakan to build some twin homes. And so, that's kind of first sort of pour in the water, but also have some other opportunities in the area personally. And I was introduced through Larry Shellhammer, who knows Dennis from kind of the Supervisors together, and hey, this seems like somebody that, we should get to know each other. And that's kind of brought us here today. Spent a little bit of time speaking with everyone about housing needs. I know it's, you know, you know about this much at this point, what Postville needs, but looking forward to learning more. And again, specifically talking about the thirty acres you guys have in the Southside. I've brought with me Kevin Costerwell, he's a landscape architect out of Decorum. And we, you know, saw the engineering drawings, I think Darcy passed along, and we said, okay, you know, how do we envision something? And, you know, I, I think the discussion, it sounds like, how do we get from point A to point B? You know, and that great housing and, you know, go through it in a methodical way, bring in the right resources. And Kevin came up with, just based on, I'm not sure what this, I'll show you first, but... So this just sort of gives an idea of what could happen here. And, you know, takes the topography of the, of the parcel into account. A variety of housing needs. I know it's very front and center that, you know, you lost an option for senior housing in the market. You know, this, this would be a, and again, we know this will all change, but we want to just give you an idea of what we think this could become. But it's a mixture of single-family, some sort of senior-specific, twin homes, four-plex, just a, a kind of, a mixture of housing, which, you know, creating some density, but also, you know, taking the topography, sorry, taking some of the topography into account to sort of maximize the area, hopefully some walking trails, maybe a few water amenities, just as you deal with detention and how it might be put together. But, and I, and I can, I'm happy to show this, you know, send it to you via email, but this was just sort of a thought of, okay, how do we give you an idea of, you know, I'm not the idea guy, that's Kevin, but I'm more the blocking and tackling, you know, budgeting, putting all the right resources in place to sort of make that happen. And I know there's, I mean, I, I can envision something where I'm an extension of, you know, some of your work or help implement it, but, I mean, I think as I've talked, you know, I've been in Charles City, Old Line, Zandico today, Marquette tomorrow. So I'm sort of canvassing some of the areas here in the market. And it, it seems I have somewhat of a unique skill set up here that I would like to have another reason to come back and work outside of this. And, and just, so our Wakan project, we're doing eight twin homes that were in two phases. So we'll start the, this spring as soon as the infrastructure is in place. But, you know, outside of myself and somebody writing contracts, every, all the local, all the, all the labor is local. So everybody lives within, you know, thirty miles of, you know, Almackee County or Almackee, Clayton, when she comes.
Where is that property you're talking about?
Um, it's on the north, sort of west side of town, so Ninth Street. So if you're...
Route seventy-six.
Route seventy-six, so across from Ryzer Implement, you know, or Kirkland's a little, you know. And that's twenty-some acre parcel, and this is just cards off.
About two and a half out of twenty-one. Yeah, so the ground that we purchased from the brush against for the stone water retention, not all of it is used for stone water retention. We saw a while ago, to develop some of it for housing. This is just one type of housing. As Jed said, it's, it's Fortment homes in two, two phases of Fortment homes. There's other ground that they have a right of first use on that could evolve into a different type of housing, but we expect nothing but housing for this, this ground. The dancing to try and get something. I just say my thing, Ben. The ground is, is all right. It's, I mean, it's, it's a good thing to have. But we've put a lot of money in tax and finance for the infrastructure. We've already put in the water and sewer, and we've already put in the road that will service this subdivision. That's where the real money is. That's what it takes to make a development to occur. It's not the ground, it's what's underneath.
Yeah, and just, you know, without a bunch of inside information, you know, thirty acres is going to be probably a phased approach to development and extending infrastructure, but, and taking into account, you know, everybody's thoughts and, you know, gauging, I guess, community needs and better understanding what that is. Because, you know, I, I think it could be a nice mixture of, you know, variety type of houses, you know. That's, you know, we're, we know what we're going to walk on is not a one-size-fits-all. And, but we also feel like there's some pent-up demand that this is our, you know, at this point, a best guess, the two-bed, two-bath, car garage. Half of them have full basements, half of them decide on grade, but can appeal to both, maybe someone that wants to move off the family farm or somebody young coming into the community. Had a number of conversations with Michael Foyle at the hospital, and, you know, he has doctors showing up. And if they don't have somewhere to live, they'll go somewhere else. You know, they might work in Wakan, but once their, if their family's getting in the school system and they start, you know, starting their life somewhere else, I mean, that's a, and that's a portion of the population that you need to appeal to, I think, to round out your community. Questions? And I, you know, I, I'd like this to be a conversation to sit down and, you know, I have some ideas about how I can help, you know, assist and make it happen. Yeah, I think, not that there's not a lot of capable people here, but, you know, having a quarterback maybe that understands the different pieces of the puzzle and working along with you. And I, I think, I, I would enjoy that opportunity, however that looks.
Can you email it to that plan to Darcy, so he can build itself? I'd like to see.
Actually, I'd like to leave that plan up in the... There you go.
It's exciting. You know, we want that for somebody, right? To come along and look at, you know. So did we.
Then I started talking to Gary over a year ago. And initially, it was more in the context of doing apartments, and they, they didn't find somebody else that is a better fit, quite honestly, than I, than I would have been. But we pretty quickly started focusing on this parcel and...
Fate and switch.
I like the variety of housing.
Yeah. Right.
Cause not one size will not fit all.
Right. And it's, I mean, it's certainly a balance and...
I was just saying, Ben, you wanted to do Gary.
Sorry, this is, this is Gary as a city manager.
I'm here for another reason.
Yeah.
We're excited.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I hope to have an open dialogue to figure out, you know, a plan of attack and be part of that team, whatever that looks like.
Now, maybe should have set this up a little bit before we had you. I, I, so, three weeks ago, Larry and I are also on the Board of Directors for VMH Hospital.
Yeah.
There's Shellhammer, yeah.
He's the one who introduced us.
Yes, and then, so during this, during our meeting, Michael Foyle had made a comment that he wanted the Board of Directors to initiate a statement that we needed to push for housing in the city of Wakan. And I looked at him and I said, I said, I don't think I can do that. By the simple fact that I'm from Postville, and I'm the mayor of Postville. And I said, how about, and VMH now is county-owned, kind of sort of like that. So I said, why, why don't we do an Almackee County statement? You know, for housing in Almackee County? Well, we did that, you know, and, and so, before the meeting was over, Larry and I were sitting next to each other. He said, you know, I got a guy that's going to call you. You know, and, and there he did. Ben called me that, he called me that afternoon. And I said, maybe, maybe, you know, things are meant to be. Sometimes this happens. Cause we sat here, we've owned this property not all that long, not all of that long. But every day we wait, and every day we, and we truly didn't know who to even talk to. You know, so at least we've got a dialogue going now between, you know, a guy that can, can help us, you know, and then Maggie's here. So this is kind of like, this thing's maybe moving in the right direction. And you're right, Gary. Everybody knew on this board that buying that piece of ground was probably the cheapest thing we were ever going to do, that the rest was going to cost some money. And...
The best thing about this is you control it now. You, you know, the opportunity to make decisions and how you want it.
Exactly, you bet, yes.
It's a big deal for us.
Yeah, yeah.
By the way, there is so much housing need that there's plenty for you guys and us.
For sure, yes, no, no, you bet. And, and yes, we know that, and, and it wasn't, you know, that I wanted to make a smart-ass statement that day, but it was, it was more like, now this should be county-wide, you know, and, and that's, so that's, that's how it works, so, yeah.
Well, and, you know, I've talked to, I was doing, I was a development director for a construction company most recently before it spun off my own. And I've talked to a dozen-plus cities, and most of which are slightly larger, but now I'll have a housing problem. Cause everyone's unique, you know, and that's what we would like to help you guys figure out and then help you implement.
Yeah.
They have a big business in the town of Ziegler Cat, you know, right? A lot of jobs, you know.
How many jobs are they adding, do you know?
Well, I think at the first, they were, they were thinking about twenty, you know, when they, you know, up and running, added jobs, so, yeah.
Yeah, you know, added jobs besides what they already...
Exactly, yeah.
So, right, you want to keep those people in the community.
And the statement about doctors is correct too, you know. Yeah, you bet.
Being able to keep those people that are maybe financially a little bit more capable of spending money in your community as opposed to, you know, buying groceries or a new truck or whatever that is, I think that has a meaningful impact.
Right.
Any other questions?
And just a comment, to have someone with a tie to Almackee County doing this, I think adds a lot to the whole picture, you know. You believe in us too, and...
Right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, okay, item eight is Val.
It is. Thank you for listening to Ben. If you only knew how many different developers we've talked to in the last four years and to actually get a bite and to move forward, it's like a really big deal. And maybe you guys already have this, but we just like... Okay, so I am going to talk about childcare, and Kristy is still here. Michelle Barnis is here from Upper Explorer Land, and Gary Bowden is here because Gary actually serves in Childcare Coalition. So we are tag teaming tonight to do whatever it takes to spread the word. Kristy, I was thinking, before I even start the event on Friday, did you want to share that?
Oh, yes. So, Friday, we're going to have a community event as well in this center from three to five. And it's just a meet and greet with potential and current legislators, representatives, and myself. I'll talk about the wage enhancement program more, and then we'll just discuss childcare topics and whatever else you guys want to talk about.
Yep, so just FYI, Friday, yes, we've been doing this, but you know what? We have got to have these pop-ups to keep hitting it home. And the good thing is, is that Ashley Hinson was just in town in Wakan on Friday, and she had just gotten done with the Iowa Women's Foundation and talking with them about what great things are happening in these private counties, and specifically even in Postville, because this was kind of how it all started, right? And the push is, is it's like, we need match money because we need to continue to buy time. And the other thing was, is can we provide businesses with some kind of tax credit that maybe would give right to the coalition, which in turn helps with the wage enhancement program? So we call it a childcare solutions program now, but the wage enhancement has been the only thing that has really worked. And unfortunately, that costs a lot of money. And we love that, don't we? So that hundred and seventy-five thousand that was raised, remember, the state came in, matched it, matched it again. Michelle Barnis is here. We've worked through Upper Explorer Land to get that paid out to the four childcare centers in the county. Of course, you guys had some things here with Postville that were just Postville that all worked out. And then, of course, we paid out eleven, thirteen, eleven? In-home childcares where they didn't necessarily get wage enhancement per hour, but they received, let's call it, a bonus, okay? So we wrote out checks of five thousand dollars to our in-home childcares that were licensed and registered, that the criteria... I shouldn't say this wrong. And so those are the things that we've been doing. And like Kristy said, it has delivered, especially in Postville, but it has delivered across the board. But now, we go into next year, right? And so we have like, I want to say a hundred and sixty or a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars going into the new year, okay? But to maintain what we've been doing, we know that we need to raise another fifty thousand dollars. So by July first, we're hoping some of our cities and our county will kick in, right? Along with some of our businesses, but of course, everybody's looking for the money. But we are trying to get this information back out there and be like, it is working. We are doing a better job. We now have a childcare coalition with about, I'd say, fifteen members roughly, where we meet monthly, we talk about where the dollars are, we talk about how are we going to raise more money. I have been to the Almackee County Fair, I have been to the ATV Club. I have, we are working on going to every single city. We were in Wakan last week, we're here this week. Everybody is out there, we will be going to the county. We did send out a letter to... Uh, we did send out a letter to businesses that were like fifteen, twenty people or more on saying, would you consider? Because we're trying to get this fifty thousand with the thought process that the county is, or the county, the state is going to kick in again. Uh, through either a CBD grant or something like that, but we don't have the definite on that. All I know is that we have to do everything we can to keep it moving for the sake of childcare. And Mike Klemish has been involved with discussions as well as now Ashley Hinson has been talking about it in regard to tax credits to businesses if they would give. Because of course some really get it, some really don't. Um, all I can say is if you hear Christie's response to what it has done, it's been a really good thing. And it has been the only thing so far that has really worked. And so we're, we're trying to keep that momentum. Uh, is there anything, Michelle or Gary, that you would like to add? Because we're all here as a team or Christie again, or any of the children or anybody else.
My kids have a lot.
No, I'm not saying that's good. Point in case, right? All right. But anything you want to add or talk about?
Feel free. Okay. I'll, I'll joke. Thank you so much. I don't want to add. I think that was pretty good, but, um, no, I guess I'll stand. Okay. Thank you. Um, so what we are asking, we tried to come up with this coalition that's meeting regularly, some type of a fair ask for each community. And we decided to ask the exact same thing at the county and each city of three dollars. What is your name? I'm sorry, Michelle Barnis. So I'm the regional planner of the county, regional planning commission, and I've been working on the Childcare Solutions Fund and, um, so that is the actual ask that we want you guys to kind of think about and review and consider basically. Um, we do have, going into the second year, we have, um, over two hundred thousand at this point. So we had local, some local funds that were raised last year that were able to carry into the next year. We also raised another fifty or sixty thousand for the second year, but, um, so it's good. Second year's looking, okay, we need about fifty, just like Val said, to be able to provide the same level of enhancement we did the first year. So that's just for the second year, but this program in continuity would require that level on an annual basis. So that's why we're going to convene and say, would you consider an annual giving per capita? I think another big push is our connection with the businesses, which is ongoing. And we are continuing to have monthly meetings with the state and their progress, but we cannot count on it right now. So I would say second year is looking pretty good. Third year, which we plan a year ahead here, we're trying to be responsible. We need to get going pretty heavily if we wanted to show this program continues. And we've seen right by that, the centers have said great things, but it's really been able to solve from the registered in homes. So keep in mind, we've lost Alma Key County about sixty percent of our in homes in a decade. Okay?
What's that?
We've lost about sixty percent of our, of our in homes, our in-home childcare in a decade. That's a lot. And so it's part of this organ, and I think Alma Key is somewhat unique. I don't think many other counties in the state also serve their in homes. We did these bonuses and it just built business resilience and retain them. We saw some amazing comments from in homes too. Some of them just bought and needed children so they could finally go to a library town. I mean, it's really neat impact. And the original fundraising, Postville was a real strong aspect of that. We did get from other areas of the county too. Um, but the, the positive impact has hit the whole county. A lot of those in homes were in Wakan for it. So, yes. So that's the official ask. In case you need, you know, I know it helps to be specific. And, um, I don't, I know you guys are starting to talk a little bit, so we thought this was a good time. And if there are any questions about the program as it was last year or moving ahead, I'm happy to answer any specific questions. So, yeah.
Three dollars per capita, would that, would that fund like your three, four, five, six, seven? If every, you know, kind of Postville's share or whatever, Wakan would have a three dollar per capita kind of a share, Lansing, you, every, even the littler towns.
That's our whole, and then the county itself, and the county we cover, yeah, unincorporated population.
You mean that?
And we're going to make requests to the county and we will go back to them, same three dollars per capita.
To the mural.
Yeah.
And that is the third page of that handout. It's basically that.
Yes. So we got real fancy here, guys. Pretty, easy to look at. All right. And you can see the back, kind of how we, we based these, these asks, kind of what we saw from the donation. The city asked us, are new, you know, that's kind of leading with the coalition thought, what would be fair? What would be, you know, something that could digest? It's not overly burdensome or something they can plan for. But the other stuff is based on the level of giving we saw. There were some individuals giving fifty to two hundred fifty dollars. There were community groups and funding groups giving a thousand to fifteen thousand we received. We have businesses that gave some of them on the smaller end and then some much more substantial. So, yep, there's quite a variety and there was a lot of excitement initially and it is like challenging and we're trying to keep the energy going because it's resulting in good things, but it will go away very quickly if you don't, you don't get the energy up. So, yeah. So that's, that's all. Any other questions? We've all been specific, we've all on our heads. Okay.
For any childcare center staff, we're hearing wage enhancement, probably sixty, fifty.
Yes. Sixty people received anywhere from a dollar to four dollars to try and get them to a more livable way.
So this impacted the lives of eighty providers in our county. Okay. Thirteen of those were in-home providers and sixty-two or so were the center. So the center staff employ a lot more, they have a lot more, you know, providers at the centers, but we also were serving those in homes. Now, the, the hiring ebbs and flows. So if you want to look at the net impact, and this, these numbers are old because I created this flyer about a half a year ago at this point. But we had looked at the initial wage enhancement rollout. They had a net hiring of, they hired like ten or eleven people in the first quarter between the centers. But they lost a few people too. So the net hire was three, but if you want to see the impact on children that could be served with just those three new staff across the county, it could be forty-five, five-year-old plus. Okay. That's significant impact. If you want to look at the infant side, it's only five. So it varies based on these ratios that are required by the state for safety purposes. We don't know exactly, and it varies so much between centers, which staff they did hire, which each, this is a generalization. But it should give you some idea that this is starting to go in the direction that the county wants to be going versus the opposite direction, which you guys were running at. So, yeah. Any other questions? Okay. Well, please consider our ask.
Sure.
Okay. And then I think Gary's going to add just because he's been on the coalition with us. So.
The reason why I got on the coalition is not really just because I'm all about childcare. This is an economic development issue. We can't attract people. We want to build houses. We want to build apartments. We cannot attract people unless we have what would be considered essential services. And that's not just water and sewer. It's still here. And we have a real problem here in Alma Key County because we have shortage of childcare. To do the wage enhancement is just one way for us to at least maintain what we have and hopefully grow to some smaller degree, if we're talking about. And what con is made into enhancement is making us competitive with parties. That's significant. I mean, we're not, we're, we're seeing people making three and four and five dollars less than what you're getting at starting major parties. That is a problem and that's why we're getting into it. In, in our particular case, three dollars a thousand is going to be about eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, or three, three thousand a person, I should say. Um, and what we intend to do is, is budget for that in the upcoming fiscal year. But the ask is being made now because we know that budgets really start to get worked on in, in December and January. And it's now is the time to make that ask to have that in everybody's mind. That's all I have to say.
Thanks.
That will end the childcare.
All right. Okay. Thanks, Val. Thanks you guys. And it, that's true. I mean, uh, the, the start was there, you know, and, and we got to keep the push. And it's like, if, if you don't have, if you don't have that nest egg, if you don't have that something in there, um, and then it's just going to disappear. So it, it is something that we all need to work towards and, and it's like, if you think about it, and I think Gary probably hit that about as good as anything. You know, everything we try to do, everything we try to do in our communities is make it better. Well, you've got to start with the kids, you know, and so I think the, the, and we certainly, we're going to look at things, you know, and, and a lot of individuals too. They, you know, folks, and they did, they stepped up, you know, but this, I think this is a commitment that's ongoing. You know, it's not like, let's give once and forget about it. So, uh, that's, I better be quiet too. So, but thanks you guys. We're.
I think if you're paying us a three dollars per person per year, it, it seems realistic. You know, it isn't like you're asking for a hundred or a thousand dollars per person per year, you know?
We were trying to figure out which number to ask.
We're trained to.
Well, you go, yeah, you go too high and people just turned off. Countywide, that would be fourteen thousand times three.
Right. Yep.
That was, that's the ask.
All right. Any more, Larry? You good? Then we'll move on to item nine. Police hire oath of office. Jacob, come on up. See you guys. You bet.
Uh, where do you want to?
Well, you can be, you can be right by the podium there and I'll stand here and all you have to do is repeat after me. Raise your right hand, please. Oh, Jacob Connor. Jacob Connor. I, I guess, should I give him the oath first or you want us to, you want to tell everybody about yourself? Yeah, go ahead.
So if you guys don't know who I am, Jacob Connor, I'm from the area. I currently live in Omi. With me today is my girlfriend, my brother Andrew.
Hello, you guys.
Living in Omi currently, I'm a member of the Ashland Gardens, like, so I have friends and friends. Been too excited to guess.
Is that, is that good enough? All right. Okay. Okay, Jacob, raise your right hand, please.
That wasn't purposeful, was it?
Okay. At least these guys, these guys are on the ball. All right. I, say your name, please.
I, Jacob Connor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the consta- constitution of the United States.
I'll support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the constitution of the state of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
I'll faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the offices of police officer in Postville.
Discharge all my.
Duties.
As an officer in Postville.
As now and hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
That's it. Thank you. There's our new officer, everybody.
Congrats.
You want a picture?
Yeah.
Let me take, let me take perfect. What's your girlfriend's name?
Jennifer.
Jennifer. Hi, Jennifer. Hi. Is there any words you say here, Chief?
Um, I'm welcome to, uh, bringing Jacob aboard with Postville PD. Uh, he'll be starting the academy first of the year, twenty twenty-five. It'll be sixteen-week program. Uh, I think he's going to be a good fit for us and I'm glad he, I'm glad he's going to be here.
Those girlfriends, I, you know, it's true, in fact, that married men are buggers and big old men.
All right. Okay. That's already done too. So let's go on to item ten, police purchase request. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's start off with the easy one first. So the vehicles.
Oh, no, that's.
Oh, is that some different?
That's a resolution.
All right. Well, this is easy too. Um, so with the new hire and another new hire in near future, I am, uh, looking at purchasing three more tasers. Um, the one taser that I do have for the reserve officers is pretty much obsolete. Um, this one is an older style. So I'm thinking to get the three taser sevens that we are, which we already carry, um, so it will be all the same, identical. There in your packet, there is a, a quote there from Axon for three tasers for, oh, what is it? And then so actually it's a, how many? Sixty-month program or sixty-month, um, payment of about fifteen hundred a year. So it'll be run from November to twenty-four, twenty twenty-four to November twenty twenty-eight for, uh, the amount they have listed there.
Eighty-four, sixty-four, eighty?
Yep.
Fifteen hundred a year for four years?
Uh, yep. Uh, actually the one year is like, in, in December, twenty, there's two payments, one in November, one in December. The one in December is, uh, of twenty twenty-four is nine sixty-six.
Four, six thousand.
What's that?
Fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred a year times four is six thousand. Right?
Um, yeah.
Eighty-four, sixty-four, that's it. Maybe seven, come on up there.
There you go. Yeah, one nine hundred. Yeah. Is that one payment? And. Oh, yeah. So they did, so what you're looking at, they didn't include the hardware that, so I gotta get, um, seven cartridges, practice cartridges. And so that's a, that's not added on there, onto the actual taser quote itself. The cartridges I need to get for the cat, for the ones to go to the academy. The prac- the practice ones and then the live ones. So those were included on that, what you're adding up.
Okay.
What you were looking at was just the actual quote on the tasers. Yeah. So that tasers itself was, uh, seven thousand. Yeah. Yep.
How old is the one that's obsolete that you said that you have?
It's the next twenty-six. Um.
I mean, how often did it, back in twenty twenty-eight, or is the obsolete?
Taser sevens just came out last year or year and a half. They have taser tens right now, but taser sevens and taser tens are the top two. And that they, they will be on the market for a long time. Axon. It's the same, it's the same company that we went through or we're going through right now with the other tasers that we got a year and a half ago, I believe it was. Yeah.
How long do those teaser things last?
Um, depends on the abuse and usage of them. Um, the X twenty-sixes that we had, I, I, I'm probably guessing they probably had them for at least seven, eight years. And these are better quality tasers than what we had, the X twenty-sixes. So.
Did you use the other ones?
The X twenty-sixes, did they use them?
Yeah.
Yeah. They did. They just, you can't get parts for them anymore and you can't get the cartridges. They're going obsolete. So that's why we went with the taser sevens a year and a half ago. And I want to be the same with what we already carried. Instead of getting the taser tens.
Oh, if he wants to, he could.
What's the difference in these cartridges that say like the three?
What's the difference in these cartridges that say like the three point five degree and the twelve degree?
Uh, the three point, well, three point five. Depends on is the distance and with the angle. Sierra, I want to, just to show them, one, grab your taser. And see on those, that taser right there, there's four, there's four actual prongs that come out.
Okay, they are the bar.
They, the bar, the bars, and if you light that up. You have a, don't do, you have, light that up, you got a green LED light comes up. One will be upper body, other one will be lower body. If those prongs connect, you got like fifty thousand watts going through you.
Thank you for not shooting.
So that's like the angle, that's what.
Okay. Are they all yellow? I mean, that way you can grab it knowing that it's not something else, is that why they made it yellow?
Yep. Yep, yep. Sometimes you'll find them blue, but.
Everybody goes to the academy has to, is hit by one and then take it.
Actually, Jacob will be getting tased. Tased next year in a couple of weeks in O'Wye, going through the training.
Ooh.
Get video.
Hope he did it tonight, he'd be done with it.
None of us are instructors, so.
Alright, so we're talking about tasers. That's, was that three of them?
Yep.
Three total?
Three total.
Yep.
Uh, Axon sevens.
And the cartridges.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, then you'll have a taser for every officer?
Yep.
I make a motion on the Axon, three tasers and cartridges.
Okay, the bar second?
Bar second.
Any further discussion? Not all of them in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who know, carried.
Okay. So the next one is a big one. Uh, there's three, uh, let's see, one, there's three quotes here. And of these three, nine eleven custom. Is what has everything what we're looking for. So we're looking at getting for each officer. A level three. Actually, it was a. Okay, one level three ballistic shield. And then, um. Two. Level three A shields, ballistic shields. And also looking at getting, um. Ballistic helmets for each officer. We do not have them right now. Um. It's extra, basically another tool, the tool belt for us, protection for us, safety for us. Can be used on. For, you know, with the outcome, with everything going on in the world today, with all these. School shootings, mass shootings, especially school. Not on what it, will not happen here, but if it does, these will come in handy. For the protection of our officers and to the ones that are in the, inside the school to help shield them, to get them out.
So these are like those big plexiglass things?
They're, yeah, they're not, they're, they're like plexiglass, but they're not, they're the.
Clear.
They're heavier duty black shields that are ballistic. That will take up to take a, some of them take a rifle, other ones will take a shotgun and a, and a handgun. And then the helmets are the same ballistic for the helmets.
I think it's interesting that the date is on nine eleven and the company is nine eleven, so that might be an omen.
Right.
And you said you have three of these level three shields.
Right, and one, one, the, the one bigger one is a rifle shield. Bigger, so. How do I want to explain it? Okay, so the bigger one. So the, the bigger one is for rifle, to protect you from rifle and shotgun and handgun, but the bigger one is also going to protect. The other officers, so I say if we're going into a house, if we got to make entry into a house, we're gonna have, the lead guy's gonna have that shield. And they're gonna, it's gonna, they're gonna form a V and they're gonna be behind that shield that's gonna protect them, because they're all coming in together.
They'll all be covered by one shield.
Yep, that shield's gonna protect that group coming in, and then when they get in. That's when, yeah. It's hard to explain.
No, it's hard to, it's hard to imagine having to do that.
But that's, and that's the same type of situation coming into a school. The officers will have their own shields in the vehicle, but if not. If one officer's on. You can't sit around, you gotta go, so you're grabbing that shield, you're going and you're covering the hallway, covering the rooms and getting people out. And say you do come across a room. People in there, you get them out, you back them out, you stay in front. There's a hallway, if they're coming down the hallway, you know? There's a lot of, be a lot of clearing rooms and stuff, but that's what these shields are for, for protection of the officers and protection of the individuals that are. In the, in the house or school or whatever.
But you said these aren't available yet, or they are?
No, they are.
I mean, when, so they could ship it out?
Yep, these are on, these are available as soon as, um, yeah, make the phone call. This company here is probably actually the same company we're probably gonna use come first of the year. For to get the new officers fitted for, um, vests and. Our vests that we have now, they're five years old, so they're outdated, or gonna be outdated. So they gotta be replaced too. But. What was that with the vest, there's that. Come spring.
Yeah, that.
A B D P grant.
Yeah.
Where they, it's a grant for, for the US or law enforcement, they provide, it's like a fifty fifty grant. For vests for law enforcement.
Hey, any more discussion?
So there's three, there's RTS, Stryker and nine one one.
Yep, and nine one one's the one that care, has everything that we need. The other ones, it was, um. Either they were higher priced or they didn't have everything, have what we are all looking for.
Okay. So everything on that nine one one quote?
Mm-hmm.
So what is the? What was the, um. The number three item, those. Wireless LED base plate pressure pad remote switch. It's another shield?
Wireless LED.
No, it's item number three. Five of them.
Oh, those are for the lights and on the shields itself.
Oh.
They have, they have the light. That you can put on the bright, you use them.
To blind?
Yeah.
To light it up in?
Yep. And, and that pressure pad switch is what, is on the backside, so if you're holding it, there's a switch where you've got control of your hand, turn it on and off. And you can put it in strobe, so if you ever look at a strobe. Like the lights that we have, when we hit, hit them with a strobe, it blinds you.
Right.
What about the shield pull of the K nine?
Uh, there is, uh, Sierra's already applied with the K nine grant. Vest program, same thing they give it, right, am I right? He'll get a vest, yeah. Yep, same as what, uh, they did a couple of years ago for Zena.
Okay, so then line number eight is your helmets.
Uh, yep.
So there's four shields with this type of LED lights, is that a mistake?
Mm-hmm.
There's a choice type of the LED lights that you said on each shield, but in this, I mean.
There's three shields, should be four lights, uh, maybe, might be a. Might get a mess up on there, so it should be four instead of the five.
Well, your one is a shield and two is four shields.
Nine, there'll be five though.
Okay. Yeah, that's.
Level three and then the, oh, four of the.
Yeah, cause I go on with the.
One level two and two.
Five, yeah, five, there's one, yep, five. Five officers.
Which only one?
One of the bigger ones, what's that?
Number six. Nine.
That for the big one?
That's for the big one.
And seven's four.
Yeah.
This is just a motion to accept the.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion to accept the nine one one custom quote for the new shields.
One second. Any further discussion? And now, anyone who's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those who know, carried.
Okay, almost done. So. More. I have two quotes here for new radios. Being that. Um, we're, we're located right now, it's City Postville. We got two different, um, we got Fayette County, Clayton County, Elm key County, Winshue County. For frequencies, right now we cannot get Fayette County anymore because they changed their frequency to ethics. And Clayton County will be changing theirs to SARAH. The system. Um, so what that means is we have no way to communicate with Clayton or Fayette County. Unless we get new mobile radios and new portable radios, which. The county's doing the same right as, as we're talking now, the county's switching over right now too, they're switching their portable radios. I think they're even switched out on some of their mobile.
In our. Elm key.
Elm key has, yeah. So, I got two quotes here from, one from Raycom. And the other one is out of, um, Corville. And they're a business radio sales and service, the guy that installs these radios and programs them. He's out of Fayette, it's Fayette Electronics, Dan Bonjour. I've dealt with him before. Um, with this business radio sales company. They have the exact same radios what Raycom has, but they are also giving a. On the portable, uh, trade-in for five portable radios, they are giving us. Um, six hundred and thirty dollars a piece for the portable radios that we have, so trading with a value of be about thirty, three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Raycom had that, had kinda like the same deal. But they were, I think, five hundred a radio.
It says, um.
So this is, that is the.
One, it says four trillion, it's fourteen hundred.
That's.
That is not the right one?
You're looking at the.
Business. Sales and radios. She's looking at the in-car.
Um.
That's probably the in-cars, huh?
Yeah, that's the in-car ones. That you're, you're looking at.
You went a little too far.
Yeah, you, we're still on the portable radio, we're not on the mobile radios yet, we're still on the portable. Yeah, no. Right, yeah, Raycom and the business radios for portable. The handhelds. This Corville company is giving six hundred and thirty a piece for a trade-in on five radios. Raycom is at five, will give five hundred. And for a total, for the Corville one, for the portables is thirty thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. Raycom for the handhelds is thirty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-five.
Portable radio. Trade-in on the portable radios is what?
Six thirty. No, a piece.
Oh, so it's thirty-one fifty?
Right.
Okay, I'm just making sure I'm on the right.
Yeah, right.
Because.
I was throwing on this thing. Recommendation, whenever we get multiple things from different. Bidders that we do, that you put it together, one additional page that Darcy could put in that, so we have side by side. Cause on this, we're flipping back and forth through multiple pages. So if you had something that was side by side by side for us to look at, for in numbers, it would be so much easier. We don't have them in print.
This is how I got it, and it comes in from back to back, I'm flipping just as much as you guys are.
From you. To just put numbers.
What's the total on the, on this business radio?
On the what one? That's on the backside. Uh, must, okay, it says one thirty thousand five hundred and fifty-one. Hey, Raycom was at, uh, you got, Raycom was at thirty-three, yep.
Yeah, I don't see it at all.
But this is the guy you've done business with before, you're saying?
No.
Oh, this time.
Corville guy.
Okay, so tell me what the total is on the portable.
So the portable for, just portable for the business radio sales for the portables.
Okay.
Is thirty thousand five hundred and fifty-one ninety-two.
Okay.
Now Raycom came out with thirty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-five fifty. For the portables. Handholds.
Okay, I see that.
Okay.
So we need a motion on those.
Mm-hmm, on the portables.
Okay. I move that we go to, um.
Business radio sales and service.
Get our portable radios to the place department. Does he have a, a warranty and whatever?
Yep, yep. It's all there are Kenwood dealers, so they have the same exact warranty as what Raycom's got going, it's a. Uh, is it a fire, a what, two-year warranty, yeah. Yep.
Okay, sir, a second?
I got a question.
Yeah, sure.
Um, just having worked with the courthouse and stuff and seeing how often Raycom is. Either been at the courthouse, at the sheriff's office, whatever. As frequent as they're, they're doing things, working on radios in the squads or whatever. What is this gentleman or business out of Corville gonna do as far as working on your squads or taking in your equipment?
He has a, he has a rep that works in Fayette. He's been working for all fire departments, works out for Postville. Fayette Electronics, Dan Bonjour, he's been around for years, he's got, he did all of Fayette County's nine one one programming for the radios. Did all the programming for the fire departments and EMS, um. EMA Lisa Roberts, he did a lot of work for her as well. Uh, when I was a fire chief in Elgin, I had him do all the work and install for us at the, for the fire department, Elgin. Um, so he's a local, if there is any issues, he would come up and take care of the problem. I believe. When Mike Halls was here, they have used electronic, um, Fayette Electronics in the past.
And I'm not saying one or the other, I just know you see Raycom back and forth at the courthouse or at the SO a lot.
Yep, Raycom is out of Marshalltown now, pretty much, and yeah.
Stands out of Fayette.
Well, this guy I believe came out of Decorah from Raycom.
Their main office now is in Marshalltown, this is the guy that I can deal with.
And that's fine, I just was just saying, I just see the Raycom vehicle at the courthouse a lot, so. I know there's a lot of back and forth.
Still looking for a second? Alright, any further discussion? Everybody understand?
Yep.
Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who know, carried.
Okay, so we're gonna jump into the in-car radios now, the mobiles.
I do have one more question.
Okay. Okay.
Now, so all these counties have to change radios so they can talk to each other, so now can you talk to all four?
Yep.
With these new ones, you'll be able to talk to all four.
What's Winchey?
Winchey is, they're not, we can still get Winchey County's traffic, they're not switching, they're staying the same, they have other issues going on with their towers. So they gotta deal with that, but they're not changing into SARAH or the IFITX, they're gonna keep it what they are inward. So we're still communicating with them good.
How many radios you gonna carry around with you?
Well, one portable, handheld and then the mobile.
Which will cover all the?
All those, all those stations, all the bands.
Turn the bands or turn?
Yep, yep.
Right.
Basically, this upgrade, uh, which, you know. I thought we reset four years ago, but then all of a sudden, other counties decided to go to different bands, and then we gotta jump into, now we gotta purchase new radios. You know, or to communicate. So now we're jumping into the mo- uh, mobile radios, in-car radios, multi-band. Same setup, same as the portables, but they're actually in car. Uh, so it can be five of them, one of them will be going into the new squad. Um. Then, uh, four would be, one be in the office and three on the other vehicles. Um. The Corville one, they are given a trade-in value for all four, for the four radios that we have. At fourteen hundred dollars a piece for five thousand, six hundred total for trade-in. Raycom is not offering a trade-in on the mobile radios.
What I think, if we're gonna use, uh, business.
Yes, the handheld. Yep, that's handheld.
If they're, if you're using business radio sales and service, they're, the, uh, portable ones, I would think it makes sense to.
Right.
Use the same company for the ones that.
It says fourteen hundred a piece?
Yep.
We get the trade-in though.
Fifty-six hundred?
That's, yeah, right here.
No, but he shows that we have the total and he takes fourteen hundred in trade.
Yeah, no, he didn't, he didn't, uh, do the whole trade-in.
So it should actually be less.
Yeah, be less.
Thirty-six thousand.
So what, what is this?
Get the totals on that, please.
Huh?
Get the totals on each place.
So the totals on the one for Raycom is thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. The Corville one would be, um. Thirty-four, six hundred, or thirty-four thousand, six twenty-five.
You get more than fourteen hundred from the trade-in.
Right, so at the time when they, when he brought this in. This quote, he didn't have the trade-ins included, that's why I had to write it in. Because he didn't know what the, what kinda radios we had, and so he wanted to take a look at it before he. Put that price on there. And then he said, yeah, the adjustments can be made by just deducting that off of the thirty-six. Or the thirty-four, twenty-five, or thirty-four, six, twenty-five. So basically, with that one trade-in, it was thirty-four, six, twenty-five, then take another, take another three off on that. Yep.
I, I was holding the right one, he does show, yeah, this is not, this is not what we're talking about.
Nope, that's Raycom.
No, I know, I mean, but this is the for car one that we're talking about, so he does show a trade-in. But it's still less than. Both of his show a trade-in. Cause that's the handheld that we were talking about before, right? So I was holding the right one, so he shows a five hundred trade-in, but it's still less than fourteen hundred people within car. And this, I.
All the mobile trade-in, existing mobile trade, there is a five hundred, but it's same as what the real portables were.
So, Chief, you're saying you, the total is thirty-six thousand dollars?
Thirty-six, twenty-five.
Right, and then you get, you gotta deduct fifty-six hundred from that.
Right, yeah.
Thirty-six.
So that comes down to be thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand, yeah, yeah. Cause like I said, he didn't deduct. When he first came in, this was the first one, it's thirty-six, twenty-five, and then the trade-in at fourteen hundred. But he didn't add the four, so he's fifty-six hundred.
Okay, I, I'm not a mathematical genius, but I'm not even close. But if the thing, the whole thing, if you add the seven thousand, twenty-seven oh five plus one cent plus thirty-one, it comes to seventy-one, sixty-eight and change.
You gotta take that times five.
Times five.
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand, twenty-seven times five.
That's, that's if you look there, there is a, times five, and then you run it across.
Now it's thirty, okay, now I agree with you. I said I wasn't a mathematical genius. So. Not even a good man. So if you have a handheld, you can't use that in the car or, you have a handheld and then you have one in the car too?
You need, yeah, you have a handheld on you.
Yeah.
If you're out, away from the car, or else if you're in a building. The mobile stays in the car, it's.
It's mounted.
Mounted in the car, you can't take that with you. So that's in-car service radio.
My point is, why can't you use the mobile one in the car?
You, you can? You need both.
Okay. I didn't know.
Yeah, no, you need both.
My cellphone works in my cars.
Right, unfor- unfortunately, I need both, cuz sometimes the portables will not be able to get out, but unlike the.
You'd have more power.
Power of the in-car.
All right, we got a motion yet on this?
I, we don't.
Okay.
Uh, somebody was gonna start.
What was, what was, um, Corville's total? Cause this is various total, he comes to thirty-six minus fifty-six.
That's probably what it is.
Okay, so I'm gonna say one doesn't right. So it should be thirty thousand, four hundred, right?
Oh, I do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thirty-six thousand minus fifty-six hundred will get you there.
Yep. Thirty thousand, four hundred.
That twenty-five cents telling we're not dealing on twenty-five cents.
We have more than that.
That's right.
Depends whether we start beautiful.
We won't get into that, Doctor. So, everybody, if you got that number, is there a motion to, uh, go ahead and get that of those radios?
We have, uh, purchased the mobile, multi-band radios for the police department. And I think there's five of them, right?
Yep.
Yeah, from, um, the Corville company.
Yep, it's the business radio sales.
Business radio sales for thirty thousand, four hundred dollars.
Okay.
You got any budget left after that?
Oh, I don't know.
So is there a second? All right, any further discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those say no.
All right, last one, now this is an easy one. I hope, no, I can't, never mind, never mind.
What do we got coming out now?
What are you doing?
Uh, we're gonna wait, I guess, on the other one.
Resolution.
Resolution one.
Okay, all right, so we can go on to item eleven.
Go on, we can move on.
All right, we're spending some bucks tonight, by the way, so item eleven is, uh, water department truck bids. Uh, everybody should have those in front of them. No, no, they're on, yeah, they're here in there, on your.
Um, so we'll be trading in the two thousand sixteen, uh, water operator's vehicle, um, and the three bids he received. Um, based on the. Trade-in and what the vehicle offered, the best deal would be to purchase a two thousand twenty-five, fifteen hundred tradesman. Crew cab, four-by-four Dodge from Torkelson's and Walk-on. With a twenty-two thousand dollar trade-in, leaving an amount of twenty-five thousand, nine thirty-four.
Cause what we're, what are we trading in?
We're. Yeah, we're trading in, uh, the water operators.
What, what brand, what company?
It's a Dodge.
That's a Dodge.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, and we've had a lot of issues with it.
Really?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's a two thousand sixteen.
So what's, so this one is actually, I mean, a lower, but it's a different company.
Right, and the trade-in is less, and it's less, um, it had less options if you look at what it offered.
Is that a misstep?
No, that's the police.
So I'll be the police one?
Yeah. Should be on there, sorry. Right after, right after the, all the radios, yeah.
What were the biggest things of options that they were after? Generally, just not to be included, usually, generally.
Let me see.
I'm sure he wanted the. Trailer tow package and stuff, but like.
It has, it has like trailer brake control, um.
Have like the side toolboxes.
No.
That's what I would have thought, but that's, the tradesman would have been.
It's a half done.
Yeah, but is that bigger than the F-one-fifty?
Same.
Same.
No, that's on the other one.
Did you say they have top of the Dodge?
Yeah, with, hit, the one he's trading is a, a two thousand five hundred, it's not a fifteen hundred. It's a larger Dodge that he drives now. He wants a smaller.
But still the same make.
Right, yeah, mm-hmm.
Cause it's a better trade-in than you and it's definitely what they want. And that's what I was asking, that tradesman thing of. There's different qualities.
Purchased the water, water department vehicle from Torkelson's. Twenty-five, fifteen hundred tradesmen, true camp. The Torkelson's, Walk-on.
Should we give a motion? Was that a motion?
That's a motion.
That's my motion.
Yep.
Okay.
Second, all right. Further discussion, not all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right.
Those say no? All right, spending more money.
So, kinda going back to the question, can they use those boxes in the back of it?
He doesn't want anything that large, he's gonna put, it'll, he'll put in the back exactly like what Crystal's has, if you've seen the Sewer's truck. Yeah, he said what's on the truck now is not necessary, it's more than what he needs.
Okay, okay, then we can go on to item twelve, independent contractor, contract, economic community developer.
So, um, we interviewed Crystal, there was a couple of us that interviewed her, and we offered her this position as the economic community developer. And so you have her independent contract before you tonight, and if you approve that, then she will get started.
So we have to make a motion?
Yeah.
I move that we hire Crystal for the community development, nice second.
Okay.
And I apologize, that couldn't be a peer interview. It was supposed to be, but.
I feel.
You did, thank you.
Crystal, how do you carve out enough time from the library to do this also? What? Yeah, I know.
So, I actually feel like this is gonna be, oh wait, my name is Crystal Duffy. And if things get signed, the director of community development, right? Um, when we were doing Community Heart and Soul, I was doing library director, project coordinator for Community Heart and Soul and community development. And sort of survived that, so I think I'll, I'll be good. I'm really, I'm big on efficiency.
That other one was kind of a temporary thing, heart and soul.
Yeah, that was a grant-funded position.
Kind of gone.
So that ended in June.
We hope goes on.
And this is a contract position, but a not grant-funded, and I don't wanna say permanent, well, but more of a permanent, that's correct. Right, or permanent, part-time contract position, it's not grant-funded, it's not.
Right.
For a specific project, it's, yeah.
You guys budgeted for this?
Yes.
Yeah.
And at the library, that's not full-time, right?
No.
So that, that.
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
And was the, was our Postville Center of Tourism, or whatever those people that you said we could work in, Chamber of Commerce? The Chamber of.
Chamber, mm-hmm, yeah.
I, we've never met that, but I'm, so are they on board with everything?
Yes, they are, mm-hmm, yeah.
I'm making a list of ideas for ways to make the chamber something you would actually like want to join.
I'd like to have it.
Yeah, so I'm literally writing that right now as I sit on there, so.
Right. Starting with not asking.
So what do we?
You have a second, so you just need the vote.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion and a second, so let's take the vote on that, and all those in favor say aye. Those say no. Well, we had some needed positions. Well, sure, come on up, come on up.
What are you doing, advancing?
Running the hack, and then when he played an electric guitar, and Val and I and Darcy, I know too, from the beginning when we started Community Heart and Soul. The whole process was when we looked at communities that were thriving, they had a local person, and then they had a county person that could bring their tools to the local person and do that. And then when we started Community Heart and Soul, which was the process to figure out what a community really needs to bring it together. And the whole goal then was at the end, that is to have a local person here that we could keep going forward through this, so this is absolutely wonderful, I'm so proud of Postville. And for you guys to support this, and proud of Crystal and all the community and Val and everybody that came together for this, and just excited to see where Postville's gonna go from here, so. There's lots of things that were done behind the scenes that people don't know about, and now they can see those things going forward, um, with Crystal being the community developer, so thank you.
What other communities around us did the Heart and Soul project?
Well, there's not a lot.
Cascade.
Cascade did.
Muscatine comes up to town again. Which one? Muscatine, two of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so there's, there's some, but there's many that are interested, and also Postville, um, you know, you go to different things across the country, conferences. And Postville is being talked about because of the Community Heart and Soul, what's being happening, Crystal's gone to Texas, California. And people are, are, are knowing that Postville's doing really great things, so I think of more. I have some things that I forgot to tell you on this. Um, Community Heart and Soul is literally using interviews with me and, and video from city council meetings and our info about heart and soul. In all of their new advertising videos and training videos for their project coordinators. So, um, these are being played, these videos are being played around the country for towns that are interested or doing heart and soul, so Postville is getting out there. Thank you.
So, don't leave what we've done so far with heart and soul and the little action plan and that, that that should carry us forward, so.
Sure. All right, thanks, ladies. Okay, item thirteen, engineering agreement, uh, this is a sidewalk trail extension out to Roca. Uh, remember, we discussed this, uh, last month, month before, probably, and, and, uh. And we said that we would report back to the council on, uh, well, with our first, our first move here was to hire, uh. Lindsay, or is to hire Lindsay to go ahead and, and, uh, prepare the way out there, so this is, this is our, uh. I guess you would say our, our first expense, if this, if this is something you want done, which I think everybody knows needs to be done, so, uh. That's, uh, this would give, uh, Lindsay, this, uh, yeah, this would get that project started and his recommendations, right, Darcy?
Right, yeah, so it'd be the preliminary design engineering for two thousand five hundred to three thousand five hundred estimate.
You motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I would make motion to start the engineering agreement with urban engineering.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no, all right, great, thanks, all that, we're gonna get something going there, by the way. Okay, then item fourteen is resolution number one, four, four, one, dash, two, four, eight, two, four. The resolution approving annual urban renewal report, uh. The resolution approving annual urban renewal report, uh, FY twenty-three twenty-four authorizing the city clerk to submit electronically. Darcy?
So, uh, you have before you the annual TIP urban renewal report, which is due here in December. Basically, it is the TIP revenue in, the expenditure out, which was the seventy thousand interfund loan, uh, paid back to the TIP. Leaving a TIP fund cash balance of a minus one thousand four hundred. So, basically, that's what this report is that we submit to the state. And as you heard Maggie say, we have one more year of TIP, that two thousand, twenty-nine thousand that will, and then that'll be the end of the TIP until you create more debt in the TIP area, so.
So we have, we're making a motion then
To approve the resolution for me to submit that report to the state.
I moved that we adopt the resolution fourteen forty dash twenty, no. Uh, fourteen forty-one dash twenty-four A for the city clerk to electronically submit the
Second.
Negative balance is not a problem.
No, it's the cash balance in, in your TIP, no, it'll, it'll catch up.
It'll catch up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that's
A resolution. Sorry. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, more?
Yes.
Mar? Moody? Ingstrom? Inglehart?
Yes.
Okay, done with that one. Let's go on item fifteen, then, resolution number one four four zero dash twenty-four. A resolution amending the city of Postville, uh, employee handbook. That was long.
It was, yeah, so, um, minor changes to the handbook, it hadn't been updated since, oh, two thousand seven. Um, just some language changes the city attorney made with, uh, federal labor laws, um, and then just some modifications based on your last union contract, we made a few changes of that. And that was pretty much it, but.
Just because page twenty-five is missing on my electronics.
Okay. There is a page twenty-five, um, section eleven leaves of, leave of absence.
Okay, cause it's, it ended without a connected sentence.
Okay.
So it wasn't on my
Okay, okay.
Alright, we need a motion.
Darcy, is this, huh, nothing here changes our agreement with the union?
No. Nope, this is just a handbook that employees bow Yeah.
Do you like to make a motions?
I'm going to accept this employee handbook with revisions.
Alright, whenever you're ready, Darcy.
More?
Yes.
Mar? Moody? Ingstrom? Inglehart?
Yes.
Alright. We'll move on to, uh, resolution number one four four two dash twenty-four. Approving bid, uh, for the USDA vehicle equipment K nine unit.
Alright.
That's all of this pack here, right?
That is, and so I, um, had a resolution for you prepared and we received the bids in today, uh, I would add, there was a one o'clock deadline. Um, we received three bids, I think I gave you some information out tonight, I gave you the, uh, low bid for the vehicle. And then I did give you, I think, all three copies of the bids on the equipment. So based on what came in today, um, the low bid to Carl Ford for a Ford Explorer in the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred and nine dollars. And to Sector for the equipment in the amount of forty-four thousand one forty-seven twenty-eight. Would be the two low bids, um, that was submitted. We did, but because of the USDA funding, we had to go back out again. And you have to pass Right. Yeah, yeah, so it all pretty much matched up, yeah.
I know the number's still
Actually, the vehicle bid came in lower.
What, like a hundred and
It was over a hundred and some dollars less, yeah.
Friends, you're more than the vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Crazy.
And what about the equipment, how did that
Came in the same. Yeah.
Crazy. Alright, you the motion to accept that?
I would make motion to accept the Carl Ford, um, twenty-five police interceptor, all-wheel-drive truck, and then the Sector, what are we gonna call the package?
Outfit.
Outfitting for the K nine.
Alright. Have you ready, Darcy?
More?
Yes.
Mar? Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom? Inglehart?
Yes.
Okay. Wow, got that done. Item seventeen, ordinance number seven zero one dash twenty-four and ordinance amending chapter ninety-two water rate of Postville Iowa Code of Ordinances, Darcy, what's that on?
Alright, so this is a change to, uh, what we call the yellow letter notice that we submit out. And if you'll see this, the under, the line there that the city attorney drafted. So currently, when we send out, uh, notice at the end of the month and give basically the ten-day disconnection notice, we charge a fifteen dollar fee on, um, the bill. Um, we have the continuously same people, same list every month. So, uh, we want to change that fifteen dollar fee to a fifty dollar fee. So that's what this ordinance is. It's changing the disconnection notice from fifteen to fifty.
One move that we adopt ordinance number seven zero one twenty-four to change the just reconnect rate from fifteen dollars to fifty dollars. Is that what this is, a reconnect grid?
It's a yellow letter notice, basically, yeah.
Alright, is this just regular vote?
No, it's a
Whenever you're
More?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Inglehart?
Yes.
Okay, so this'll go to a second reading unless you wanna waive any more readings to this ordinance. Second, third?
Second.
Is that Roca too?
Yeah, no, yeah, it's Roca. More?
Yes.
Mar? Moody?
No.
Ingstrom? Inglehart?
Alright. Okay, let's go on to item eighteen, then, uh, parking request from the pharmacy, uh, to deal with the city parking lot, which is just south of their building. And they're requesting
They're requesting if they could have two of the very first angled spots as either fifteen, ten or fifteen-minute only spots or pharmacy parking spots, because they, the biggest issue was during the road construction, and we had all the vehicles from above the apartments parking in there and not moving, that people were struggling to get to the pharmacy, because they couldn't park on Main Street even. So, uh, they had contacted us and asked if there was a possibility of either maybe the first or the first two either ten or fifteen-minute parking or pharmacy parking. Um, just because of people trying to get into the pharmacy. And I did notice today, there's two vehicles parked in those two spots, and they were there when I came and they were still there when I left, so.
When I came, they were getting jumped.
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't, and I don't know if, you know, it was just an issue when we had the road construction going on, but I get the, their point that, you know, when you have people that are maybe more
And you can park in front of there without going into the pharmacy too.
Sure, yeah.
But before the road construction, there was also, we had discussion about maybe making that first one or whatever handicap only parking.
Sure, yeah.
Maybe we could combine both ideas and make maybe one or two first angle parking handicap on it. And that would help the pharmacy as well. Well, ten fifteen sounds good.
So, what do you guys think?
So actually, oh, can we combine that fifteen-minute handicap parking on you?
You certainly could, it's whatever direction you want it to be, it's a city spot, so.
So if you put a time limit
Maybe that have handicap parking for ten fifteen minutes. So that no one takes advantage of that.
When you put a time limit on a sign, yeah, are they gonna do that? Like fifteen minutes, who's gonna
We don't have a parking words here in this. Same way they notice that there's someone there all day, I guess after they've served the person, they know the person who's on there. If somebody
I could put a fine on there too.
Well, I hate to put a time limit on a handicap, because sometimes it takes them a long time to get out.
Or you could say handicap or ten
Especially with the van.
Yeah. Cause if we put handicap or ten minutes.
Or maybe you just wanna wait and see now that the
Yeah.
Road construction's done.
Itself, and we, now that we have a road.
That's just
The DOT is not gonna make one on the highway that's handicapped. And come
I'll give you a heads up, come winter, all those vehicles are gonna be parked right here and they, they don't move. I had to, you know, every year, we have to move them, get some to come in and move them, because they're, they're over the twenty-four hour restriction on parking.
In that parking lot you're talking about?
This one and the this one and the other one down by Club Fifty, yeah. Yep. So come November, November first, they're gonna move from there to here. And they will get moved.
So could we have fifteen-minute and pharmacy usage on it? Yeah, that would be, unless you wanna Of course, you said next month it's gonna be a pharmacy.
The best one would probably be the pharmacy parking only.
Yeah. Just one sign, you think, cause we got two in front that most people would use.
So you think just that first angled spot?
Yeah. And then however long it takes the pharmacy, it's about ten fifteen minutes and this, that, and that. Yeah.
Start out that way.
But then our other business is gonna ask us for a spot.
Our first work, new business owner, about the same problem, just on different streets and different locations.
Okay.
Was it more necessary to make it a handicap spot than
I think you can, uh, you guys
Yeah. No, you can do nothing.
Just leave it the way it is, or designate one slot?
You could put pharmacy only ten minutes. Well, but maybe somebody has business, I mean, city business. You know what? Maybe somebody has city business or whatever it is, if you say pharmacy usage only, then chances are it's gonna be under half an hour. Yeah, while they're using the pharmacy.
I would just say, leave it as pharmacy use, cause the two signs that are out there now for city clerk and
That's right.
Those signs and those, your spots stay empty.
Not really.
Mine does anyway.
Yours does, mine don't. I take his spot.
So we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll need something, direction here, yeah.
You wanna move for pharmacy only or what? One second to motion.
I think we do pharmacy only, don't put a time limit on it for now.
One slot.
One spot.
Is that a motion, Larry?
I moved that we designate one spot of the city parking lot, south of the pharmacy, as pharmacy parking only.
Second it?
And then have more discussion.
More discussion? Not all of them, favor say aye?
Aye.
Who'll say no? Okay, they got slots. Okay, we're down to item nineteen, consent agenda, anything I've heard you guys wanna pick up?
Yeah, I wanna introduce our new four-legged officer.
Oh boy.
Yeah.
Figure.
Thank you.
I think she's Randy, when you came in, was a car here?
Was that?
Was Sierra?
Yeah.
Okay. She wasn't?
No.
Okay, well, she'll be underway.
So we can just move on till she comes?
Yeah, but
Yeah, so, was, still work on the consent agenda, so we'll wait until Sierra gets back to enter, get to meet our new, uh, sidekick.
I just wanted to ask about the not as exciting as meeting the
Okay.
Well, that was in the minutes of the meeting?
Of the pool, of the board meeting?
Yeah.
Was that on that grant?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh yeah. But no, but, so remaining funds would be useful to purchase a playground if you want, is is there a way, I mean, upwards or whatever that we can apply for more for the playground?
Yeah, we certainly can and we certainly will.
Yeah.
So I think right now, what we have to do is they, they met, because they have to put together a plan and submit that to Wellmark in order to be, to get the funding. So, they just met, we haven't submitted to Wellmark yet, because I know they were working on their numbers. And once we do that, then we'll see where they're at, and we'll certainly look towards getting more funding for playground equipment.
Okay, anything else? Not, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Darcy, do you know if that grant can be used for cameras around the pool?
Uh, that could, it has to be for fitness, but I have a ICAF grant, that that's a good one, I could submit for that. It's a thousand dollars, has to be submitted to them by December, and I was just thinking, what could I do? And that cameras would be one, so I can submit that, but, um, it has to be for fitness and wellness, I'm not sure of cameras. I suppose safety.
Safety while you're getting, having wellness.
But I can, um, submit that ICAF grant for that.
Hammer. See, Wellmark comes in there. Alright, anything else?
See, I'm not the only one that was struggling with
Pickleball court at the pool, where would that be located?
I think they were looking at putting it, um, where those basketball hoops are, right next to that parking lot.
Leaving this, the surface is kind of irregular there.
Yeah, that's part of their money, they were wanting to resurface.
Resurface it, okay.
It'll be in that parking lot.
Yeah. Says crack, crack fill resale parking lot east of swimming pool for basketball slash pickleball court.
So then, that's something that will, you, when they have it for parking for the pool, that can, it's just a net, right?
Right, it's retractable, mm-hmm.
That surface isn't special for pickleball, that it won't be damaged when it's used for parking.
I don't think so.
I'm not a pickleballer, so I don't think it's like a
It's just a, it's just
It is, that is going up there, there's always people up there playing. No, they want, they wanna put another one in.
Yeah.
I think they wanted to put a slide in at the pool and that came in at like twenty thousand dollars. Yeah, I recommended they like try and get a plan together, like a five-year plan, you know, like there's that merry-go-round that needs to be replaced, some of that stuff is outdated, so let's get a plan together. Yeah. Yeah. My direction is this, and then we're over here, and then my direction is back to this. Yeah, yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, that was extra.
Again, let's get through this consent.
Oh, it's in there.
Oh, it is?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Yeah.
So you bring up that idea too then?
Yes, I definitely will.
Oh, here comes.
This is Jekyll.
Jekyll. Hey, Jekyll. Smell me, so I'm here.
Not super friendly. But we're getting that figured out.
Yeah.
So this is the, the big head you see Bob in the back of the. So, and I think he's postal that one's least favorite feature.
Oh.
Larry, what did you do to him?
I don't know.
So he gets along with my male really well at home. He and Zena do not have contact, so, and that's more on Zena's end than his, so. Which is, it's fine.
All of it is he?
He just turned two.
Oh, cool.
His name is what?
Jekyll.
Jekyll?
Yeah.
Jekyll nine?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so he just got here from, uh, he's from Serbia.
Oh, wow.
So, um.
What's the right, really?
Dutch shepherd, he's the same as Zena. Yep, there he is, so. Yeah, he's doing, he's doing good, been a week and a half on the road and we've already had three deployments with him.
Really?
Yeah.
And he did his job?
He did, he did. So I think he started to figure out that he's a cat.
Yeah.
Wanted everybody to.
He wants a bag.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, thanks, yeah.
Yeah, he'll get a bag, he's got one coming. Like they were saying earlier, I have a, there's a grant, so he'll be getting a free vest.
So what's his favorite reward toy then?
Uh, any ball.
Anything?
Tennis ball, like the, um, the chuck it type balls, he likes those.
Yeah. Well, good for you.
That is a good.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. He's definitely, um.
Still a little puppy, still puppy in it.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Good luck, Jekyll.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for bringing that. Okay, your question?
Um, I just, they had a leaky toilets or something.
Yeah.
Sand in their own wells, that's when they're always flushing them to the west. Um, and then, but it said later on in the, the report that they were gonna get on city water. They were gonna revert those to city. How come, how are they on the, their own wells, I guess was kind of my question to begin with.
Um, so we were supposed to meet with them last week and the power went out. We lost power.
Oh, yeah.
And then they canceled because the power was out and they needed to, um, not leave the plant. So that was one of the questions we were gonna ask was an update on their wells and what's going on with them because they're still using a lot of city water, which is fine. I mean, we're able to handle it and it's, you know, funding for us, but we're just wondering what their plan is to get it resolved.
Because I assumed that they were always flushing that up there because of the sand, but I'm wondering why are they even on it? To begin with, if they're in the city.
Well, we only take their domestic.
Oh.
Yeah, we can't take their wastewater. That, that has to go to their plant.
No, they're.
The well itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, that be.
They have so much, too much demand?
Right, yeah.
Our wells can't.
Well, I mean, we can, but if Norplex were to ramp up, we wouldn't be able, we might not be able to meet their demand.
Well, we, we pump, uh, when they're taking water in Norplex and, and the city, you know, it's, it's what? One and a half million gallons a day.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, we, I, I, I think we were just very lucky because, and especially, you know, if, uh, if there would have been an emergency like fire, you know, that would be a serious draw.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so we've been lucky at this and I, um, just for the little bit I know about it, the situation is they've got, um, their main well, which has been, that was the high-grade well, and that one is, oh, I don't know what caused, but that, they're hardly pumping any water out of that. And that was their main well. And that's not the one out there where you see them running water to get the sand out of, you know, so, um, yeah, that's just.
Because they just, yeah, they, they must have to almost have a a wastewater permit from DNR just to pump, to waste what they do, just to keep sand at bay. From that, I might call it the turkey plant, but I don't know.
No, they are not that, yeah, no, that old, that one is, that Neville, they never acquired that in the bankruptcy. That's been sitting there not used.
That's the one west of that, yeah, yep.
I mean, that's a, that's a very large capacity.
You bet.
Yeah.
And then just to let it run the waste is sad.
It is.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I just seen in Dave's, or not Dave, but Chris's report that there was a lot of water come through.
Yeah, they had, mm-hmm, they had running toilets that got sand in them and then they ran continuous, yeah.
Okay, anything else in that consent agenda? Now, is there a motion?
I make motions, we'll accept the consent agenda.
Second?
One second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Don't say no. All right, is that done? Item twenty and then is the resolution for money to pay the bills. The second.
Second.
Darcy, whenever you're.
More?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Then, okay, item twenty-one is more public comment. Anybody else? Everybody sleeping? Okay, oh. That one, next one's the mayor's report. Well, I, I think that, uh, I don't have a lot to say, but I think, you know, the, the few things that we had discussed with, uh, uh, six and seven tonight on our, our agenda is a, a start for something that I, you know, I think we've all really been looking forward to and, um, I mean, it's next, it's an exciting time, I think, in our town, so. That's, uh, well, I, I've got to say about that. Anything else?
Well, it's nice because people keep saying, when are you gonna do something with that land out there? And now I can say.
Yeah.
You know, so, it, I mean, it makes us look like we're doing something, you know, because people don't read all these things, you know, so. They don't know what all goes on.
No, they don't.
They want something they can see. Yeah, and I really appreciated that, um, Mr. Garrett. And he called us all to find out what our focus is and, you know, and our vision and, you know, and he's not just coming in here with a one-trap mind, you know, his idea is already set and they're pushing that, you know, just asking us the uniqueness to postpone.
It's not a dumb deal that he's gonna.
Oh, no, no, no.
I mean, we have, yes, we have to be picked. You already, we got picked in the first round here, but now there's another steps to go through, which we have to, uh, see where we, where we go.
That's right. No, this is, this is.
This is farther than we've ever been.
Right, yes, yeah.
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 Now, has been busting her butt now to get these, this housing going in the county, so.
Yeah.
Who is it now?
Now, yeah.
The fact that the discussion is going. Cooperation is terrible. So we, it's gonna cost a lot to have the, um, hookups and everything.
Infrastructure right now.
Yeah, we're gonna have to borrow more money for that, right?
That's why we had Maggie stay.
Yeah. I mean, you had the right person here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the estimates just for the sewer was over seven hundred thousand. And that was just the sewer portion. So.
Yep. Take some money. Right, council, you guys got comments?
I do have one. I was going in, uh, in the alley behind, uh, the four hundred block of West Green Street and I, there's the old REC metal building that's at the end of the, the street, you know, where I'm talking about? I think John's Hardware owns it. In the back, there's like, I don't know how many refrigerators and stoves and stuff sticking out in the back and I don't know why they, maybe they don't have any room inside the building, I'm not sure, but it's just an eyesore.
I always thought they had those out there because they had someone coming to do a pickup.
You do.
Well, they just come and.
And they have them out there.
Well, it doesn't happen very often.
And I think that it looks terrible and it's.
Okay.
I just think something should be done.
I'll ask him about it.
Sooner than later. Because one time there was, you know, maybe six or eight, now there's like ten.
Okay.
You know?
I want to thank Dennis for the effort that he's put in and for the vision that he's had to drive some of these things from the, right bike path out to
Right.
um, along the highway there and this, this development and, and we have the challenges of council to come up with money and decide a plan and stuff like that, but Dennis has done a lot of footwork and underlaying work and.
Yeah.
Fantastic, Dennis.
Yeah, thank you.
You have connections.